Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I'm having some technical difficulties, I apologize. Good evening, this is the City of Southfield's regular meeting, being held on September 20th at 6:00 PM via WebEx. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks? Brightwell?
Yeah.
Cruz?
Present.
Frazier? Frazier? Let's see him on.
Yes.
Haskins? Taylor?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Present.
And Haskins? Madam President, you do have a quorum. Councilman Haskins will be running a few minutes late, but he will be joining us momentarily.
Thank you. We'll now have the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next, we have a presentation. Mr. Mayor?
Good evening, Council, and members of the public. This evening, I'm presenting a joint resolution, a council-mayor resolution, declaring September 21st, 2021, as the International Day of Peace in the City of Southfield. Whereas, the International Day of Peace, also known as World Peace Day, is observed annually on September 21st. This day is devoted to strengthening the ideals of peace through observing 24 hours of non-violence and ceasefire. And whereas, established in 1981 by Resolution of the United Nations General Assembly, to coincide with its opening session, the first peace day was observed in September of 1982. And whereas, to inaugurate the day, the United Nations Peace Bell is rung at the United Nations Headquarters in New York City, a bell cast from coins donated by children from all continents of the world. Whereas, International Day of Peace 2021, the theme is recovering better for an equitable and sustainable world. We invite people from all cultures to join the efforts of the United Nations family as we celebrate peace by standing up against acts of hate, online and offline, and by spreading compassion, kindness, and hope in the face of the pandemic as we, from which we are hoping to recover. And whereas, millions of people from around the world will participate in activities to acknowledge and celebrate International Day of Peace by lighting a candle, sitting in silent meditation, or extending personal efforts to do a good deed. And whereas, in Southfield, we ask residents to visit our peace poles installed in front of the Southfield Municipal Building in November of 2020. And now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the mayor and city council, City of Southfield, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, do hereby declare that the 21st day of September 2021 is International Day of Peace in the City of Southfield. And we encourage all citizens to commemorate this day and to bring forth public awareness on the issues related to peace. Madam Chair, I'd ask for a resolution to adopt, a motion rather, to adopt this resolution.
Thank you. Council?
Madam Chair, Councilman Brightwell, I make a move to be approve the resolution to adopt this presentation made by the mayor for the International Day of Peace.
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Frazier, for the adoption of the presentation of the joint mayor and city council resolution for International Peace Day of Peace. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Brightwell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Haskins? Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. We do not have any appointments. We do have three sets of minutes, Council.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve that committed the whole meeting of August 9th, and the regular meeting minutes of August 16th and August 23rd. Support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Frazier, for the approval of our committee of the whole meeting minutes of August 9th, 2021, for our regular minute meetings of August 16th, 2021, and our regular minute meetings of August 23rd, 2021. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Cruz?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Yes.
And Brightwell?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we move to our consent agenda. Council, are there any items that you would like to have pulled for more discussion?
Madam President?
Yes.
I would like to pull items C, D, and G.
Okay. Okay. May I have?
Madam President?
Yes.
I would like to move approval of the minutes as presented, with the exceptions of the items presented by Mr. Frazier. I'm sorry, I didn't write down the letters. If you want to repeat them for the record.
Okay, you mean the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay, and that would?
Those three that Mr. Frazier presented. I'd like to approve the rest of the agenda.
C, D, and G.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Frazier.
Okay, so we're asking for you, you Councilman Cruz moved for consent agenda items A, B, E, F, H, and I. Is there a second?
Second that, Councilman Mandelbaum?
Thank you. It's been moved again by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum, for the approval of consent agenda items A, B, E, F, H, and I. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Frazier?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
And Brightwell?
Yes.
Thank you. Item C, Mr. Frazier? Did you want us to have a discussion? It's for the authorization for Parks and Rec Department to pay off the LRF loan for the Carpenter Lake Nature Preserve.
Last, at our meeting, we talked about that. And Councilman Cruz brought up an issue with that art project, The Hill. And was there protection to protect the city from kids climbing on there, falling down, getting hurt? The design is the design, the final design right now? Or is it going to be modified? What is the status of that? And I agree with it, the issues that he brought up. And I don't know if anybody has responded or not. But if we're approving that project, I'd like to know are these questions, these questions are still unanswered?
Terry Fields, are you on the call?
I am, Madam President.
Would you like to?
Yeah, I can speak to, I, I'm our paying off the LRF loan was for the acquisition of the property. The project that's happening out there has been funded by a donor. And I have had a conversation with our administer, administrator Fred Zorn about having a conversation about the project. And the finish, the finishing of the project right now, it's, it's not really open out there. It's still under some construction. But unless Mr. Zorn has any comments about that, there has been conversation. We did have organization, a company go out and measure to make sure that the donor, Marshall Losser, followed the height recommendation. I do know that there has been some conversation about privacy issues. There has been some conversation with some of our administration, with the neighbor that is concerned. But I don't know about any recent conversations that have happened to this point. The, this project though, that we're speaking of in regards to the Boulder Garden or the rocks that are out there, and that was not paid for by our city. So this LRF loan that we're, that we're trying to pay off is the monies that we borrowed internally from the city for the acquisition of the property. I don't know if that answers your question, or if there's anyone else on the call that could speak to where we're at with Marshall Losser?
Well, the point, the point I'm trying to make is I realize that paying off the LRF loan really doesn't have anything directly to do with the project. But we don't talk about it now, we're never going to talk about it. And it'll just kind of fade in the background. And we, and I hope nothing ever negative happens. But as long as it's on the, on the table right now, and the questions were asked, it doesn't, I don't know that any of them, the questions that were asked have been answered.
Let me agree with Mr. Frazier on that. When, when this item was being constructed, there was extensive discussion about this. And just from a legal standpoint, it is an attractive nuisance. That's a legal term, and maybe Don can expound on that. It's an attractive nuisance. And I happened to drive by, looking at it back. And there were little kids, little people climbing on there with pants, looking at them. So it is a, and I think we had the MMRA insurers take a look at that. And certain things should be done to protect that, that structure. And this is the signs, but just intuitively, it's, it's an attractive nuisance. It is not fully protected or guarded, guarded against it. We could literally sue because it is attractive nuisance. And Don can, I don't know that how, as he wishes, but it, it's clearly in addition to a privacy issue that came up, it's just a dangerous piece of rock.
Madam President?
Yes.
This is Administrator Zorn. I'm, I'm looking at my notes from the last meeting. You know, one of the questions was, was the rock wall built per spec? And if Council will recall, we previously have presented to Council basically, an analysis that we had a consulting engineer go through. If you'll recall, when the site was designed, we did not have original topos on the site. So we worked with averages. And we determined that, yes, this was built per design. The signage, we have draft language that we're waiting to finalize. I can put that in front of Council at the next meeting for your review. It has been, as Councilman Brightwell pointed out, been reviewed by the Michigan Municipal Risk Authority. And I believe additional measures to attempt to screen the view from the property immediately to the west. I, you know, I candidly, I think that those I believe there, it's an American cedar that's been planted behind there. Those will take some time to grow. They're, they're a good size, but they, you know, they, we've made an attempt at screening that. That is yet to be finalized there. Is there supposed to be? Madam President, can you hear me?
You went silent for a minute, but now we can hear you.
All right, I, I'm, yeah, I didn't touch anything, it just said muted again. You know, so we have, have, we do have language from the Michigan Municipal Risk Authority that gone through, as Councilman Brightwell has said, is, you know, this installation attracts people to climb on it. But we could present that language at Council for your review. I believe the last thing that needs to be, I'm not sure if Council heard, that we have done some screening behind there. The plant specimens will take some time to grow. I believe it's an American cedar behind the rocks to help screen the property to the west. And then, my final comment is the donor is, still has an obligation regarding the signage, the educational component of each of these different types of rocks. That piece has not yet happened. And I, I think candidly, if I recall correctly, that's a byproduct of COVID. I'm happy to pull the, the file that our consulting engineer did, the elevations of that, and review that again with Council.
Okay, it sounds like they, we would like to at least be reminded of what, what was there. So yes, and my other concern is, are we keeping in touch with the residents that's right next door or right behind this, so that they, they are aware of what's going on? And did they agree to the plants and stuff? I believe we talked with them, or we had someone talking with them? If I remember correctly? I just don't know if we continued the process.
Madam President, I think we're Madam President, again, I, I'm not touching anything and I'm being muted. I believe that going back two years ago, we had dialogue. I don't know where we're at recently on this. And I apologize.
Okay.
I, I work has pretty much been just a few minor things since the beginning of COVID.
Okay. Okay. Councilman Cruz, Councilman Frazier, would you, are these answers sufficient? Or would you like for us, well, with the fact that the city administrator said he could come back and review? Everything with this?
Madam President, we can, we, we, we can present what we presented the last time. Here's what was built, and here's what Council approved, and here's what was built. And then get Council's concurrence on this sign.
Okay.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'm really not sufficiently satisfied with these responses. And I appreciate Mr. Frazier and Mr. Brightwell for speaking in, with their concerns too, and others. I know this, as Mr. Frazier said, not necessarily tied to paying off the LRF and, or anything like that, but if this falls off the table again, we won't even, we won't talk about it again. So the thing about it is, it needs to be a standing issue, as far as I'm concerned, till we're, till we complete it. And I, I didn't hear anything since the last meeting about anything I asked about.
Okay, so are we asking to pull the approval of the LRF loan? Or are we asking for this to come back on our next agenda with all the information to the questions? City Administrator, I guess I'm asking, is this something you can have by our next meeting?
Yeah, we'll, we'll pull the report that was prepared regarding what was built, and then we'll bring sign language forward. I mean, when we previously presented this to Council, we reviewed that this is pretty true to what was conceptually presented to Council.
And could we get like an update from the, the, the project, the gentleman that's doing the art?
I, I'm sorry, Madam, you broke up a little bit.
I'm sorry, could we get an update from the gentleman who put the artwork out there? Because he was still working on some, I know you said due to COVID, he wasn't able to do some signage and that kind of thing. But could he give us an update as to the status, where he's at on that?
I'm sure we can have him here. I'm not, I don't know about his availability on the 27th.
Okay. Or just answers to those questions? He could do them by email or something?
We could, we'll, we can get answers to his questions, yes. But we do have language for the sign, Madam President.
Okay.
That, the risk, and I'd like, I actually prefer to have Council's concurrence.
Okay.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'm just Councilman Cruz again, I'm sorry. Speaking through the chair to Administrator Zorn, I don't feel that waiting on some trees to grow, which could be anywhere, I don't know how long it takes trees to grow, but this is, this is something we need at least a interim remedy to, at least for the neighbors of this, of this area. And so I know, I heard you say we, we've done some things over there. But you can clearly look into the yards, surrounding yards or whatnot at this point in time. And I think we can do something better in the interim while these trees are growing. I mean, I, I would rather see trees at the end of the day. But if we have to wait 10 years to make that happen, then I don't think that's fair. And so I would, I would say there's got to be other solutions.
And from, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, for my part, and I, I'm the one that pulled it. The, I don't want to hold up paying off the LRF loan. That's primary, that's city business. The other is, questions were asked, and we didn't get any answers to them. So it's peripheral to the LRF loan. So I can vote yes on doing the LRF loan. But I'd like to get the, the questions answered that we asked, because it seems like we ask questions, and we just never get answers.
Well, Mr. Frazier, I have, we answered those, the questions about the designing that a couple of years ago. And I'm happy to pull what was previously presented to Council. What was not presented was the signage. And at that time, we discussed additional landscape. I'm going to have to pull those items.
Okay, you probably pulled them when I was retired. You probably answered those questions when I was retired.
Madam Chair, if I can, just let me ask, Mr. Zorn, when you said that it was built, built to spec, in order to build to what Council approved? I would like to see those documents, because if my memory is correct, the original intent was that spot was going to be a little small meditation seat. Then the next thing we know, we have this mound of dirt and rocks. So you, you're saying that we, from, from inception, where it was a meditation? Would the Council approve the, the, the build out where it is now?
The, my, we, we did not have a full detailed plan on this. This was a concept plan, and my statement was, is about the height. And when, and when we started with that, I don't have it in front of me, but we did not have a topography that shows, hey, this was shot at this site. The, when we had that review done, it meant that conceptual plan within height. And if I recall correctly, the Lasher Woods was, was that meditation part. What was built at Carpenter Lake was a little bit different.
Okay, all right, if you can document whatever you said, I remember that Cocked Lake should have been whatever was at Loser Woods with a, a pool, a little, little run, some running water or something, which was still the meditation concept. So.
At one point at, at Loser Woods, there was discussion about the meditation, a water feature. There's no water feature at what was put in at Carpenter Lake. There's been some talk about it, but we've done our best to stick with this concept design. It was not a finished, very detailed drawing to work with. And then the other thing regarding the signs, and I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar enough with the planting specimens that were planted to the west of the large boulder.
Okay, all right, well, you indicate you will be bringing in the stuff back, so we, we can see from the maturation of this spot, you know, concept. But it, it, I'm with everyone, we should have approved the LRF, because it is money, there's money. And the longer we, we don't pay it off, the more, obviously, we're going to be paying the interest until it is actually paid off. So as soon as we pay it off, the, the better we offer it.
Thank you. I just want to ask if, City Administrator, if you could tell us, is the next meeting good, or do you want to wait to the next committee of the whole? We need to give you time to pull the minutes and, and go over everything, and then be able to speak to us about it.
The topic really is better at a committee of the whole. Additionally, I'm going to be out of town three days this week.
Okay, so, so can we agree on the next committee of the whole, which would be October the 11th?
The 12th, we're on a Tuesday because of Columbus Day, if I'm correct.
I'm sorry, okay. October the 12th?
I'm fine with that.
Thank you. Mr. Cruz?
Fine with me.
Okay, thank you. So we'll go ahead and leave the item C on the consent agenda, and we'll vote to either approve or not tonight. Do you want to do all three items at one time, or you want to go ahead and approve this one?
Madam President, a point of information, since this item was already pulled from consent agenda, item number C is a reference point, that should be voted on independently.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So then may, I will entertain a motion for item C if there's no further discussion.
Madam President?
Yes.
I move that we approve of consent agenda item C, the paying off the LRF loan for Carpenter Lake.
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by, I'm sorry, it's been moved by Councilman Frazier, supported by Councilman Brightwell, to approve the authorization for Parks and Rec to pay off the LRF loan for Carpenter Nature Park, the Nature Preserve. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Haskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
No.
Taylor?
Yes.
Banks?
I'm, I'm sorry, was that a no?
No. No.
Brightwell?
Brightwell? Yes, the mute button was hiding, thank you.
Cruz?
Cruz?
No.
Fraser?
Yes.
Item adopted.
Thank you. Our next item is the acceptance of Beachwoods Park Master Plan.
Uh, again, that's one that I pulled and again, it's, uh, question asked, but none unanswered. And, uh, I brought up whether or not there will be, uh, uh, grills at the picnic shelters. And the fellow was making the presentation, was unsure. And, uh, since we're, uh, approving the master plan, uh, seems like either the grills are in, the grills are out. That's why I brought it up. I still don't know whether they're gonna have grills. I would prefer to have grills there.
Thank you. Uh, and also we have received a few letters regarding this item. So, uh, I would ask at this time if, uh, Parks and Rec, Terry Fields, if you would give a better explanation of what the master plan is about. Some of the questions was on the, um, entrance on Frederick Street. A lot of the residents did not know that that had been scrapped or changed, so I guess, uh.
Yeah, I, if, if I, if I could, uh,
Yes, please.
Madam President, so, um, just, uh, I want to be respectful for everyone's knowledge base. Um, a, a master plan, when a master plan is created by the community, it's conceptual. Um, and by that, I mean that their ideas that the, the community has gathered together to put on paper, so that if we have a grant opportunity, or if we would like to develop the park, that we have a plan in place. Now, anything that goes forward, any project, any development, comes before council for their approval. This Beachwoods Park Master Plan, um, was, uh, a project that started with our residents. Uh, it's our second largest park. It's eighty acres. Um, we reached out through surveys and, uh, sp- uh, uh, community engagement, and we received twice as many as we did from the master plan for the department five years ago. We met specifically, um, with the, um, neighborhood association that are, uh, surrounding Beachwoods Park. Um, we had an open house set up. Um, it was met with some hesitation by some folks, but some folks participated. We had, uh, OHM staff there, we had Parks and Recreation staff there. We answered questions, we were out there for a couple hours. The group met, um, the group, meaning the association, met outside by themselves. Um, they brought some things to, uh, the attention of our consultants. Uh, those three items were, uh, the size of the pavilion area that could be, uh, used for, uh, entertainment, for classes, for camps. People are referring to it as the amphitheater. We're referring to it as a pavilion. Um, we heard their comments. We looked at the size, because really a, a size, a size is a good example of a concept. So we have a, a pavilion area in there for entertainment. Now, when we bring it forward, if we were to bring it forward and go forward with some of those improvements, we would bring it before council and all of those details would be discussed, much like putting in a pavilion area. I know that, that, um, Councilman Fraser asked about grills. The reason why, um, OHM had asked about that, or had responded the way they did, is really that's a, that's a detail that can be covered when those pavilions are put in. If they are put in by our, our city. So each and every step of that master plan process of any development is brought before council. So after meeting, after meeting with those, with folks, our residents over at Beachwoods, those three areas that they brought up were changed. It was the, uh, the entrance in from a residential area that was taken out. It was some concern about the entrance into the park, um, that was also addressed because of their comments. Um, and the design of the amphitheater, or calling it a pavilion, that was moved, um, uh, uh, into the park a little bit differently, so as to take into consideration sound. So each of the areas that were brought up, um, before our group, um, from that association, they were all addressed and the changes were made in the concept plans. And then we reached back out, I know that OHM reached back out to the group, and then we heard the comments to that. So this Beachwoods Master Plan, this project, what we're trying to do is have it, have you receive it. And then what we will do is it will be part of the master plan, the five-year master plan for the Parks and Recreation Department. So this isn't saying that everything in this is going to happen. It's saying that this is the feedback that we've received from our residents, all of our residents, here in the city of Southfield, about ideas and, uh, amenities that folks would like to see at, at their park. Um, but again, each and every development, if there are to be developments going forward, and I'm sure there will be at some point in time, um, but each of those ideas would come before council, come before a committee of the whole, and all of those, all of those items, concerns, um, can be addressed at that time as well. So again, concept plan, um, we, we, we've reached out to our community. Uh, we reached out specifically, uh, to that neighborhood association. We put, we put advertisements on their door handles to make sure that they knew about it. Um, and, and so we really, really made a, a great effort in connecting with folks. And I'm sure that there will be more suggestions going forward, but this isn't the only time this will ever be discussed again. So I, I hope that answered any questions that you had. I don't know if Administrator Zorn would like to add to that, but tonight we are asking that, that you, that you receive it.
Madam President, this is Administrator Zorn. I would like to add, we had over four hundred participants in this program. We added an additional session that was, uh, focused af- you know, as the plan was near completion. Uh, and out of that session, uh, all of the homeowners in the abutting neighborhood, the, the door hangers advising them about the meeting, were hung. Out of that came the modification and the elimination of the pathway off of Frederick Street. Also, the, uh, amplifier was scaled down to a pavilion and relocated. And entrance into the park was, uh, also a- addressed. Remind, want to remind council that we had over two hundred people participate in our city's master plan, which was a, a raving success, that type of number, but you had double four hundred participants, um, on this Beachwood Master Plan. I, I think you've had an awful lot of input. This is a concept plan. This evening, we're asking council to accept the plan with the instructions that it be, uh, incorporated into the Parks and Rec Master Plan. Um, which, the, the difference in what we're, the action we're taking, I'm not asking council to adopt the plan, simply to accept and forward the plan to the, uh, be incorporated into the master plan. And the difference there is after some discussion with our city planner, uh, we didn't feel that the plan should be adopted by council until it went through the planning commission. Um, so we have that, and then as we've said a number of times, this is a concept plan. Before any of the components of the plan are, uh, moved forward, they would be presented to council as part of an, of a budget action. Uh, in other words, we would not, uh, undertake, uh, a, a design element of the plan unless there was council action authorizing us to proceed with that plan. Those are my comments, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. And in line with that, the answer to Mr. Fraser, couldn't we just add grills? And then as it is conceptualized, uh, yea or nay at that time? But just put them in there to let them know that that's something that we do want to see there, if at all possible?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So President?
Yes, um, Councilwoman Banks?
Um, I'm, uh, to Mr. Zorn, were the residents notified of the changes after the meeting where the door hangers were held? The reason I'm asking is we've received quite a few emails from the residents in that area. Um, and they seem pretty upset and disturbed about this proposal, which I am not understanding. And it just seems like there is a, a communication gap between, you know, this proposal and the residents. And, you know, I don't know if we need to delay action on this proposal so that more residents have the opportunity, um, to see and hear what we saw last week? I don't think last week's meeting was on the TV, so I don't know if they had an opportunity to see the actual plan that we saw. And I, and I think that's something that we should a- at least afford to the people that are in that area.
Madam, uh, to President, if I may, to, to Ms. Banks, Councilwoman Banks, um, I think Ms. Fields is better equipped to answer that question. Uh, again, I just want to emphasize, we're not asking council to adopt this plan. I'm simply asking you to accept it, um, so that we can begin, you know, hopefully begin the master plan process, which this would be incorporated into. The reason I'm not asking for outright adoption is the final process of the Parks and Rec Plan will go through the city's master, uh, will go through the city's planning department. Um, and a- again, if Ms. Fields can answer that last question. Um, I know the three recommendations that came out of that meeting were incorporated, and that meeting being the meeting with the neighbors, that they were incorporated into the plan. And if, those are my comments, thank you.
And, and to, and to echo that as well, tho- those three comments that the group had were, um, represented in the, in the, in the updated version, uh, Councilman Banks. And that has been on the city's website, um, and on the Parks and Recreation website, uh, for the last month and a half. Um, I know that, uh, Chris Riggert, who is the project manager, uh, reached out to the group to let them know that those changes had been made and then did not hear anything else from the group. Um, and to answer your question, yes, absolutely, more comments can be taken in. We're about to start the five-year updated master plan. Um, and we'll be bringing that forward, uh, to you when that's completed. Um, our, we have a January fifteenth date. And so during that five-year master plan, there will be community engagement once again. Um, there will be surveys once again, and it will be in reference to our entire park system. So there will be a continued opportunity, uh, for folks to, uh, provide input and feedback, and, and we want that.
Hey, so if we are going to accept a plan, we're not going to approve this until after the planning commission has reviewed this and has made their recommendations back to council for approval? I'm not sure if I've ever, if, if I ever remember accepting something and then approving it afterwards.
We are accepting it to be rolled into the, um, department master plan. And a- as part of that master plan, everyone will have the opportunity again to comment, um, on the plan itself.
Comfortable that those residents that we put the door hangers on their doors are aware that, that some of the recommendations that they had for changes were made?
We, we reached, I, I, I can speak to the fact that, um, our, our consultants reached out to them right after, um, that meeting, Councilwoman Banks. We, we take those, those, those meetings, that input, um, the passion that we heard from folks, we take that very seriously. We're, we're really not trying to fight against, um, any concept, any plan. We're, we're simply trying to take feedback from all of our residents and put it into a plan. Uh, we know that everyone's not going to agree with everything, but as part of a concept, each and every component will be brought before our, our council, and everyone will have an opportunity to speak to e- every step that Parks and Recreation and the city takes in any plan. So, yes, I, I do feel very comfortable that, um, folks were able to make comment and they're able to make comments going forward. Um, this is a body of work that was done that was specifically for Beachwoods, that reached out to all of our residents and got input. And this is a concept plan that was developed out of all of that input. We're asking that you receive that body of work and that we are able to incorporate that into the master plan for the department as we move forward. There will still be opportunities for people to talk about concepts, to talk about Beachwoods, to talk about a pool, to talk about, uh, playgrounds, uh, to talk about dog parks. It's, it's, um, all encompassing, uh, for our department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and also Terry, by rolling this into the master plan that makes the city, uh, in line with getting the grants, if any grants or anything should, um, Parks and Rec apply for, that's part of the requirement is having that five-year master plan. Am I correct in stating that?
You, you are absolutely correct. In order for us to qualify for grant funding from the MDNR, uh, the state of Michigan does require each community to, to prepare that, uh, five-year plan. And that's when we go to council for your adoption, uh, once that's completed. Um, and then we would move forward after that. Um, we did one five years ago. Um, it goes before planning committee, uh, the planning commission, and then it comes to council. And then that's incorporated into the, um, to the city master plan. So, um, we're, we're taking one step at a time here.
Okay.
Madam President?
Yes.
Uh, I will, uh, accept the, the fact that I misunderstood what we were discussing at the committee of the whole. I thought that was gonna be the final plan. I didn't realize that we were accepting the plan rather than adopting the plan. Uh, I thought we were adopting the plan when we vote, we're gonna vote on it. And that's why I made some other comments too, but, uh, we'll see if I can stand this track. Uh, and I was, when I made the comments about the grills, I was thinking about the individual picnic shelters, not the pavilion. Um, but, so I, I will say that I misunderstood what we were voting on, because I thought we were adopting the plan that would eventually be built. And it would have been very easy, uh, when I asked about the, the grills at the committee of the whole, if the answer was as easy as, well, maybe they will, maybe they won't, this is not the final plans. We can talk about that later. I would have been happy to not pull it tonight.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm, I'm satisfied with the answers that I've got. I just misunderstood what we were voting on.
Okay.
Madam Chairman? President?
Yes.
I just, to Mr. Fraser's comments, last Monday, we were using the term adoption. After Monday's meeting, the city planner and I, uh, consultants from OHM, uh, Ms. Fields, we had conversations regarding the procedure. Um, and because the plan has not gone to the planning commission, um, adoption was the, the, it, we, it was recommended that we not actually use the word adoption. Adopt, you know, the city council's the final say after it's been gone through the planning commission. There was an internal discussion about, it's not the Parks and Rec Master Plan, but a sub-area plan for a, it was a park plan. And this planning enabling that And this planning enabling that really doesn't clearly define the air, the park, uh, plans. So we took the step back and just, you know, accept, uh, we batted around using receive and place on file. And even in the narrative in the write-up, uh, this is not a cons- uh, a commitment to fund or approve any of these things. So I think we may have caused some of the confusion because last Monday, we were using the term adoption until the city planner and I had a conversation last Tuesday or Wednesday.
Okay, thank you for that.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, I think the added discussion obviously cleared this up. Um, this is, let me just use my own term that I understand. This is a concept, right? This is primarily a concept.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, um, and, and I do realize that uh, whatever the, the rubber meets the road, when you guys want to spend money on this concept or it's gone through the various steps, but when the rubber meets the road, you ask for some dollars to put in a shelter, put in a road, or put in, uh, a, a water fountain, that is when council will get in and we will have a, we, we working on the final plan. That, that's my understanding that this is, money is involved in this.
That is correct.
It's correct. Okay, so this, this is just a concept. I, okay, I, I just want, well, it was fairly clear, but I wanted to just make sure this, that's what I'm operating on. We are, we are not asked to, for the rubber to meet the road right now. We're just asking for it to be part of the master plan, uh, something pretty to look at until we, uh, ask for dollars to, to build it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, council, are we ready to, uh, vote on this?
I am ready. My, I, I'm, my question is got answered.
So this is Councilman Mandelbaum. I did, I do have a question though.
Yes.
So I, I understand that, you know, this isn't, this is just an idea and we just need it if we want to get grant funding. How, what are we going to do for all the residents that have been emailing us and everything else that are con- were, were as confused as we were? Um, besides for them listening to this meeting and responding to the, you know, to their emails, is there anything else that we are going to do to try to clarify this, this issue, this item?
Uh, that's a good point. Uh, I will ask Terry Phil, since it's Parks and Rec. Are you going to do any other, um, reaching out or?
We, we, we certainly will reach out to the homeowners association, let them know that we have this plan, uh, the concept that was updated with their suggestions. We can also let them know about the upcoming master plan for the department when, um, all ideas and all comments will be taken into consideration.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, oh, uh, Madam Chair, one, one final question. And Terry, um, and with, with, in, 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 in association with the consultants, what guarantee that we will have a very rigorous outreach, uh, resident? What guarantee that we have that we will, will have a rigorous outreach residence, uh, when we start making the final, final decisions?
Well, well, I can tell you from the very beginning, um, even with Beechwoods, uh, m- much more so even, uh, with Beechwoods, it was so important that, um, our, uh, community engagement was a priority. Um, it's a priority with this master plan as well. I know that, um, the consultants are, uh, partnering, uh, with a, a group of folks that specialize in community engagement. I know that we'll be reaching out, um, in person as well. Um, there's ways that we can do that. Um, we'll do both in-person and virtual. Uh, there are so- still some folks that aren't comfortable with in-person. Uh, we'll still do the surveys, so every step, every attempt will be made so that we can get, uh, the kind of successful, um, engagement from, from our residents, uh, that we've received to this point plus. Um, you know, we've got, that's one of the reasons why we wanted to really continue on is that we have a really great foundation of, of folks that we're communicating with, and we're only going to add to that. So, um, we're looking forward to what, uh, OHM is bringing to the table. And, uh, we look forward to, to, to reaching out to all of our residents, uh, continually, especially with this five-year master plan.
Okay, um, I, I think this is a great idea. And I think, um, this is a, a hot button issue and it's obviously going to be a hot button until it, if the, uh, it's finally built. That when we do, H M or whoever, uh, we, we just want to make sure they document this community engagement documented, it is documented, where we will have something to stand on. We ask, out of the hundred families, we talked to eighty-eight, eighty-nine. I just want something that, that, uh, uh, will be documented, uh, with respect to engagement. So we can literally say we didn't go off just doing, pulling things out the air on this.
A- absolutely. We're, we're, we're definitely results-driven as is OHM. And, you know, we, we don't look at, 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 at these opinions, these differing opinions as, as a bad thing, right? It, it's everyone feeling passionate about, you know, how we want to move forward. Um, and, and we want, you know, we want to negotiate that with our residents and make sure that, um, what we're doing is, is what our, our, our entire community wants to see. We've got a lot of parks. We've got a lot of opportunity for, for growing here. Um, and I think that we can do that respectfully and, and fairly, um, and with good intent. And, and that's what you have from your, from your department, from your city administration.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, Ma- Madam Chair?
Yes.
And this is Councilman Hoskins. Um, i- if I could just piggyback to off what both Councilman Mandelbaum and, uh, Councilman Brightwell just said. Um, I have a, a full agreement. I hope that we get something out clarifying what we're doing here tonight now, um, out to the residents, um, uh, who have reached out to us. Um, and just like Councilman Brightwell just said, I, because I, one of the questions that I had was, who exactly did, um, OHM reach out to in this process? I mean, I know they reached out to members of the community, but I'd like to know, you know, more detail about who, like, how many people here are the people? Because I got two, and then emails that we got, um, this afternoon, I got two of the neighborhood association presidents raising these concerns, and I would like to know, like, oh, well, we reached out to them. And either they said their concerns or they, they never reached out back, they never reached back out to us, uh, about that. So mo- I, I would definitely hope that we follow up with, um, with more info about how we are reaching out to, um, the residents in that area, uh, once we send out something clarifying what we're, what we did here tonight.
Okay. Very good. Good points. Okay, council, are we ready to, uh, vote on this?
I move that we approve the, uh, concept plan for the, uh, Beechwood, uh, Park, if that's a good, good term.
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Frazier, supported by Councilman Brightwell for the acceptance of the Beechwoods Master Plan. Uh, Mas- uh, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
It's really not the master plan. It's only a piece of the master plan.
The Beechwoods Master Plan.
Okay. Okay, I stand corrected.
Thank you.
Mandelbaum?
No.
Taylor?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
And Hoskins?
Yes.
And then our next item is item G, authorization to purchase a mini skid steer for Forestry Division?
Yes, again, that's one that I brought up. Um, when I looked at the, uh, notes for tonight's meeting, it showed two different kinds. One is a, apparently it has a seat on to sit down. The others want to stand up. But in the write-up, it also says they want to use it for a lot of other things. And the total cost was like forty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, and there were other things that were going to be purchased. Uh, what kind of, does anybody uh, on the call, on, in our meeting tonight, know what those other things are that we're going to be voting on?
Council President John McCrea, now if I could elaborate a little bit on that. First of all, the skid steer that we're talking about is the smaller one in the picture, the one you stand behind. The sizes of the two photos are a little bit deceptive. It is smaller in relation to a full-size skid steer than it appears. The attachments that may be purchased later, first of all, there's clearly no plans to purchase them right this minute or firm dates to purchase them. Things like there is a, it's possible to use this machine for boring, for running tight underground for short distances, things of that nature. We may not purchase this, the attachments to do other things. We're just mentioning that there is some versatility in this machine. Right now, it's being purchased for the tree crew and it will be used as configured. So we're not asking for any commitment to purchase anything else, and we may never purchase other attachments. We're just pointing out that skid steers in general, and this one in particular, does offer other options for usability.
Okay, so the cost of the skid steer itself is the forty-seven thousand. That's skid steer plus, plus other things.
What we're purchasing right now, which is basically what the tree crew needs. Not, or if we decide we want to do boring, that would be a separate attachment we would purchase. Right now, there's no plans to purchase the separate attachments. We're just pointing out that we can do that if needed.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, council? Okay, hearing none, can I have a motion?
Uh, Madam President?
Yes.
I move that we approve the purchase of the skid steer, uh, as presented tonight for the Parks and, uh, not Parks and Rec, for Public Works.
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Frazier, supported by Councilman Cruz for, uh, the council to have authorization to purchase a mini skid steer for the Forestry Division. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Taylor?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
And Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes our items for the consent agenda. Our next is, uh, ordinance enactment, uh, council?
This is Councilman Mandelbaum. I move that we enact ordinance number seventeen forty-three.
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Brightwell for us, for the council to enact ordinance number one seven four three. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
And Taylor?
Yes.
Next, we are at our communications. And I just would like to read that the Southfield City Council has established the following rules of procedures for all speakers. And that, oh, please abide by the rules of the procedures of the city council and refrain from making personal, disrespectful, slanderous, or profane remarks. Under rule seven of our rules and procedures, no speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, city council member, or other elected official. That it is unrelated, that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer or employee or city council member or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use threatening or abusive language when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent, and if not, your mic will be, uh, muted. Madam Clerk, would you please open the lines?
Uh, Madam President, we do have, uh, a few individuals that, uh, would like to speak tonight, so we will go in the order, um, that they were received. So we'll start right now, unmute.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Gerard Muller, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee, Post Office Box One Fifty-Five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven. Madam President, words matter. At least they should matter. To say that black is white is a lie. Likewise, for the last fifty-two years, to call the forty-sixth District Court the Southfield Municipal Court in Chapter Seven in the Southfield City Charter is also a lie, a big lie, a Trump-style lie, a whopper. Ask yourself this one question. Should a Southfield civics teacher be allowed to use the Southfield City Charter? That is to say, council's charter as a textbook to teach Southfield civics? That is to teach the big lie, a Trump lie, to your child and to your grandchild and to generations yet unborn? After fifty-two years, it is about time that you folks here on this city council wake up and do your job, and also do yourselves a felicitous favor and delete Chapter Seven, that is, the big lie from your outdated charter, along with the many other outdated items, by creating a charter commission. If the city of Detroit can mandate periodically a ballot initiative for a proposed charter commission in order to try to update their charter, then the Southfield City Council should be able to do the very same thing. If not this council, then who? Who else, pray tell? Who else, Madam Chair? Who else but you? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, there you are. Uh, good evening. This is Pamela Gerald, and I want to bring something to the city's attention. And that is, we did some work in the approach areas or in what you call the right-of-way. Right at Eight Mile and Greenfield, you know that that work has not been finished. The owner of that particular business invested hundreds and thousands of dollars to make the property look pristine. The city messed it up when they did their work, and they have not made that business owner whole. So I'm going to ask that you put that on your list to-dos to follow up and finish the job. Now, to my fellow Southfield residents, we have an election coming up, November second. And this is what we always experience, and I'm going to do some classes. When you run for council and you get a packet, they give you the do's and don't. And what I'm talking about specifically is campaign signs. We have some people that have been on council for many, many years that are putting signs in the that are putting signs in the right-of-way, in the approach. You're putting signs out on vacant lots that you do not have permission to put signs on, and at vacant properties. Now, if you're able to put a sign someplace without asking for permission, why do you think that you would be a good representative for the people handling our city affairs as well as being a fiduciary for us taxpayers? After this election, I'm going to be doing some classes on where to put signs, where not to put signs, that after an election, you have a week to go back and get your signs? And by all means, don't steal someone's sign or steal the cardboard, and then put your cardboard on top of another person's wire and make it your sign. I will be watching, and I will be watching very close. And I have about twelve people. All we're going to do is drive around the city and notice whose signs are in violation. And I will call you out on that, leading up to this election. Get it together. Or don't put out any signs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. This is Stacy Jackson. Can you hear me?
Good evening, yes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Stacy Jackson. I am the Association President of Beechwood Acres Homeowners Association, and I am calling actually to express my opposition to the acceptance of the redevelopment at Beechwood Park. What is most disturbing is that the statements that they communicated with the residents of our communities is a bit misleading, disingenuous, and false. The reason why the associations met outside of Beechwood Acres is because Chris Riggert and the city representatives that attended refused to speak to us about our real concerns after we by happenstance learned about this redevelopment. There was no real feedback. What the residents were presented with was a grade school poster presentation. So the only things that they would let us do was walk around a room and look at a vision of what was supposed to be. There was no scale or professional scope of work. Keep in mind that the residents in these communities had just learned about this event maybe a week and a half prior. So we all showed up to discuss what was happening in regards to destroying our quiet enjoyment, the increased noise, traffic concession stands, and amphitheater that at that time was fifteen hundred seats. None of those things were really approached, addressed. So please know that it was not just Beechwood Acres that stepped outside of the rec center to speak. We met with Bradbury as well, the rezines, residents in homes and streets all throughout and surrounding Beechwood Park. We spoke to one another because our voices were not being heard by those who said they were there to service us. So the sheer fact that you received emails today to express these concerns shows you that the communication was poor and shoddy at best. These WebEx events, you all can't even hear one another, much less when the residents speak. It is disturbing that these types of concepts were being decided upon while your residents and your constituents were dealing with COVID. The residents did not get an opportunity to provide any feedback. Because I promise you, the day after we met, June twenty-ninth, the month of July was just horrible with storms. Our community, we had more days without power during the month of July than we had power. In fact, immediately following that, our power was out for four days for that second event that we had. Power was restored for about twenty-eight hours, and then out again for five consecutive days. So throughout the entire month of July, the communities surrounding Beechwood Park suffered massive power outages, floods, trees, uprooted wires. None of that is being taken into consideration. And as for the record, the email that was from Chris Riggert, there was no response because we had no power to respond. Not only that, the residents never did get an opportunity to speak. And as for the door knockers, they were very much selective. Beechwood Acres Homeowners Association, we printed our own flyers and canvassed the entire community. That's why the turnout was so successful on June twenty-ninth. It had nothing to do with the city. Bradbury Park, Carlton, all of those streets behind and in front of Beechwood Park had no knowledge of this redevelopment plan or concept. It is disconcerting that we have city officials and employees that would mislead the council into voting in a way that is not the voice of the people. That is a problem. I encourage everyone, everyone, execute your vote. It is your voice. And it is unfortunate that the surrounding communities, residents, homeowners, and families already struggling with COVID have not even had their voices heard with something as critical that is definitely going to impact their quiet enjoyment of their homes. With that, I wish you all a good night. And I do hope that the residents surrounding this park do take note of those who voted. I do hope that they take note on how to vote in November. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Madam President, at this time, no one else has pressed star three to be recognized to speak.
Okay, then I will now declare communications closed. Counsel, this is now under counsel portion. And I'll start with you, Councilwoman Banks.
I really don't have anything to say, except that it's disturbing to hear what Ms. Jackson just said. And I hope that the city reaches out to those residents and better communicates what we did this evening with reference to the Beechwoods area. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Thank you. I come by for veterans. All veterans and Coast and Gold Star families get free admission to the national parks. The the only thing that is required, you would have the appropriate identification that you are a veteran and/or you are the relative of a deceased veteran. Yeah, you can get free admission to the National Park Service and also the US Services. And please call ahead in event that you is actually those areas, but it is free. And also, one final item. Outback Steakhouse is giving veterans a ten percent discount on all of their entire meal. And there's no, there's no timeline on this, and there's no deadline. But currently, Outback is giving all of them the ten percent discount. And obviously, you would have to have identification that you are a veteran and/or active duty. And and also in this notice, they did indicate for other heroes, police officers, firefighters, and also giving a ten percent discount on their meal. And although you may not be a veteran, if you can, most people, someone knows they're veteran, so please pass, pass the word on. And if additional information needed, feel free to give me a call at City Hall. You can reach me by way of the city telephone number, two four eight seven nine six five one five zero. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Yes, I just wanted to say it was quite ironic today that we had a joint resolution based on peace. And I just want to speak to incident that took place this morning here in our city that people may have seen on the news, and just say that these are rare occasions that things like that take place. Thankfully, no one was hurt. And I want to give kudos to our police department for quickly handling the matter, securing the area, and already coming in contact with, or shouldn't say coming in contact, but with securing most of the individuals involved in that situation that took place. And I talked to the chief right before the meeting, and there will be a press conference tomorrow with more information. But we gotta just make sure that that's not our image, number one. And then number two, I would just ask that now that we do have a peace pole, mini park or whatnot on the municipal campus, I think we should look at next year and from years on to do a candlelight vigil in the name of peace and unity for all people. Because that was the whole point of bringing that to our city. So other than that, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilman Frazier?
Uh, I've already dropped too much tonight, so I have nothing more to say.
Thank you. Councilman Haskins?
I don't really have anything to add. Just echo what Councilwoman Banks said about making sure we get out the information about what we did with the vote with Beechwoods. And I was fortunate to hear what Ms. Jackson said about her experience with this project. But I hope we get out soon that this is not the end, that those communities will still have plenty of input on what's going to be at this site. But that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Uh, no, I have no comments, except I would like to make sure that we do follow up with at least the two items that we discussed. One of first about Carpenter Lake with with the rocks and the interpretive signs and everything else that we were going to try to do there. And then also make sure we follow up with the Beechwoods Master Plan to ensure the residents understand what the acceptance was, and that it's not necessarily the approval, but that it's a concept and everything else that, once we decide to do it, will be discussed at length. So they're always kept in the loop. So I just do want to make sure that we do reach out to those association presidents who can spread the word through their contacts as well. Other than that, have a good evening, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. And I concur with what my colleagues have said. And I hope that we, well, I know that we'll hear back from the city administrator at our next committee of the whole. But I would also like to reach out to Terry Fields and ask her to let us know when she reaches out to the homeowners association to give them the updated information that was presented to council, because it's very clear that they are not aware of some of the things that was presented to us. So it is disturbing to hear that they were not given this information. I think communication to the residents should have been better. And it's, if there's a late date, we understand it's a concept, but still, information and communication, conversation should happen with the residents. So I'd like to see and hear that that happened and that the homeowners are made aware of the plan that we received. So I'd really like to hear that as soon as possible. With that, everyone, I ask that you have a good evening. Next, we go to the mayor's portion. Mayor Seiber?
Good evening once again. I have a couple of things I'd like to mention. First of all, the reports that we're getting from Beaumont Health System continue to underscore the need for people to get vaccinated. The increase in hospitalizations are almost totally people who were not vaccinated. I would also mention that shortly, and you can check with the Open County Health Division website, we will have booster shots available for senior adults in the Southfield Pavilion. The final plans are not in place, but it's very soon the booster shots will be available at the Southfield City Health Pavilion. Secondly, I would like to offer congratulations to the Southfield Historical Society. They have been notified by the Michigan History, rather, Historical Society of Michigan that they are being awarded a local society award for its work in highlighting Indigenous people's history. They opened an exhibit like two years ago on the Potladee at Southfield. And this has been the reason for the award. It also coincides with Southfield changing Columbus Day to Indigenous People's Day. And so this award will be conferred at the annual meeting of the, and history contents on September twenty-fourth and fifth. Thirdly, last Friday, I had a meeting again with DTE. And again then this morning. On Friday, DTE sent out four people in their division that clears power lines. I have registered my complaint with the company several times that I didn't think the clearance of power lines that was done this year, although they didn't do the entire city, they did quite a bit from Greenfield to Losher and eight to Eleven Mile. Nonetheless, my objections were with the width of the tree trimming over power lines. I did not feel, and pointed this out to their contractor, there are many limbs still either over or near the power lines. And I pointed out two other things that I'm hearing from residents. One is so the power line is typically in back of the house, the major feed, and then the line that comes into the house many times, or many instances, runs through trees. And I've had residents talk to me about, well, I wanted to get my tree trimmed, but the tree trimmer came out and said, I'm sorry, we can't trim that line or that tree because there's a power line running through it. So in other words, this leaves the homeowner in a catch-22. DTE says, no, we don't trim trees away from our power lines, yet homeowners can't get trees trimmed when there's a power line coming towards their house. And then my other concern has to do with their really the slow response to restoring power in August, and their admission that they have old equipment in the city. So I also suggested to them that if you're only coming every five years and you see these weed trees like mulberries under the power line, you really should be trimming those, because mulberries and some of these weed trees can grow six, ten feet a year. So in no time, they could reach the power lines. At any rate, our county executive, David Pelter, held a conference this morning for mayor, city administrators. for mayor, city administrators, with DTE executives, along with Terry Northiam and Trevor Larr, two top executives with DTE. They heard our concerns. I received word after making suggestions today that DTE will be reaching out to me again. In the meantime, they have committed $70 million to additional tree trimming. They're also offering a tree trimming training program for people who would like to learn the trade of tree trimming. And they have added, or in the process of adding, 200 more linemen so that repairs will not take as long. They have admitted that the events of this summer took them off guard, the 10 storms, and that they are now going to treat the weather conditions as normal rather than abnormal inauguration, if you will. And so they pledge to be more prepared in the future. I hope that they live up to these promises. And then finally, through some complaints I received, but also in driving about the city, recently, I've seen quite a bit of bedding, box springs, and mattresses put to the curb. Our bulk pickup by JFL will not pick up mattresses or box springs unless they are wrapped in plastic. This is a COVID precaution. So again, you can put bedding out, mattresses, box springs. Residents can put them out to the curb. However, they must be wrapped in plastic. Those conclude my comments for the evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. City Administrator?
Madam President, Council, thank you. I want to just comment on Councilman Cruz's comments. This morning's domestic violence situation was very difficult for all of us to hear. I think the police department did a great job in getting this situation under control. Want to remind people, and to our district court and our police and fire, they have been actively working to increase the awareness of domestic violence. It impacts all communities. So on Sunday, October 3rd, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., beginning at our municipal campus here, there will be a walk to highlight domestic violence. You can find more information regarding this event on the city's website. Also, look for that again, that Sunday, October 3rd, from 11:00 to 2:00 p.m. I want to comment as we embark on the master plan. In addition to notifying the comments that we heard regarding the Beechwood Plan, the administration will have a conversation with our planning division just to speak about what else we can do to make sure people are aware of this process. As I said during my earlier comments, we did have 400 participants, twice what we had in the last master plan. But always letting people know what we are working on and how plans are being put together. And with all plans until council adopts and then funds, we actually have lots of plans that haven't been able to move forward because we haven't been able to address the funding component. So as we embark on this five-year master plan, encourage people to communicate and to, if council can help us, let people know that this process is starting. Within the plan, there is a component regarding the outreach on the Parks and Rec Master Plan. Look forward, those are all of my comments, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we move to the city attorney. There is one item for, it's an introductory item that the attorney will be presenting to us. And it's just for us to vote on, for us to approve the attorney to defend the city in this matter. Madam Attorney, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, Madam President, Council, Mayor. And as Madam President just stated, this is a letter just seeking council's approval for the city attorneys to take the necessary action to defend the case. I will let you all know, and I apologize if it states the plaintiff. The plaintiff is an employee, which I believe is in the letter, but I didn't tell you what department, and I can say that, is that the employee was a police officer with the City of Southfield Police Department. And we're just seeking that council approves that we take whatever action is necessary to defend the city and its agents and employees in this cause of action.
So council, can I receive a motion?
Madam Chair, this is Councilman Brightwell. I make a motion that we approve the request of the city attorney that she defends the city in this action as presented. Thank you.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Cruz, for us to give the approval to a city attorney to defend the city in this matter, as mentioned. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Taylor?
Yes.
Thanks. Brightwell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Amanda Wong? Okay. Madam Attorney, did you have anything else you'd like to share with the council tonight?
No, I will just keep council updated via, either they can call me directly or later it would probably be in a closed session.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Good evening, everyone. Just a reminder, Election Day is 42 days away. And for individuals that have signed up for the permanent absentee list, if you were to move, just say you moved to a different location, that does not transfer. So you would need to sign up for the permanent absentee list again. And if you're unfamiliar or unsure where you vote, you can call my office or go to our city website, or you can even go to www.michigan.gov and see where you vote. If you have any questions about that or you're in transit, you're going to be moving from one place to another, our office is here to assist and help you to make sure that you know which location that you are going to be voting at. Thank you.
Thank you. Treasurer? Okay, our planner, are you on? City assessor?
Good evening, Madam President. And Council, I don't have anything at this time. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm sorry. City engineer? Okay, and we have nothing to schedule. Is there anything else for the good of the order tonight? All right, hearing none, I now declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.